The phone's different.
In violent adverse possession for it.
It's a tough thing to win.
Yeah, to win for it, you have to try to remedy it locally. And that was kind of ambushed and really back to me. So I waited some time and applied for the board. And I was on it for 20.
Okay, our sue mat's.
On this board?
Yeah. I, uh...
What was his basis for an adverse possession?
If you maintain...
Yeah, if you have exclusive control over a streppel property for, I think it's 25 years in Michigan.
I think it's 14.
Is it that long? Okay.
And, uh...
I haven't looked at the law in a lot of years.
It changed. This was a long time ago.
Yeah.
And, uh, it just got me so bad, I got on and I ended up on for 20 years. But it's nice when you can find a way to help people.
Oh, yeah.
Finding ways, the work.
This, this board that I've had has worked very well together. And they do try to, you know, they sometimes they have to say no for various reasons. But on the other hand, if it's a reachable request, you can justify the five factors, the four factors.
I think on the 16th meeting, there was one I did not like. I said it on that one.
The wetlands? Last week?
I don't let those things stay in my mind.
I, I can't keep them there anymore.
It's not a good idea to anyway.
It must have been the, uh, the little road. Wanted to construct within the wetland setback.
I believe I voted in favor of it. I had some remarks.
Well, I do like to protect the wetlands. Gives us a lot of detail. Gives a lot of detail in the minutes, so. Yes.
I need one more anyway.
What's that?
You need one more.
No.
No, we're good.
You can have three.
You'd have to have a full, yes, well.
Yeah, it'd be, you'd have to be unanimous with that.
Yeah.
Alexa, you coming?
I haven't heard from her, so I'm assuming so.
I'm trying to think. She may have parent teacher meetings tonight.
Hey, I don't know.
Say, I'd say, can we give her one more minute?
Yeah.
6:35 and then be mindful of people's time. We can get started then.
Yeah, that works.
Those stickers over there. You'd find them all over the chairs now.
Uh, I got it from a shoes, shoe box that he got new shoes. Well, I'd say for the sake of time, I don't want to keep everybody here, but we can go ahead and get started. And if Chair Mansour shows up, I can gladly turn the reins back over to her, so.
You're good at that.
I am good at that. I have no problem turning it back over to her. So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for this Charter Township Meridian Zoning Board of Appeals on October 15th, 2025. Um, I'll go ahead and do a quick roll call of the members who are here. So Member Herschizer.
Here.
I'm Richard Zeiss.
Chair.
Uh, Member Brooks. Member Benwell. I am, Member Koenig is here, and Chair Mansour is not here either, so it's the three of us. Do you all have a chance to review the agenda? Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Mr. Herschizer.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, the agenda as written.
And I'll support.
All right, most of us support. Any comments to discuss or not? If not, I'll go ahead and take the roll call vote. So Member Herschizer.
Yes.
Member Trisaius.
Yes.
And Vice Chair votes yes. Not that we really need to vote on that, but that's okay. Uh, so moving on to number three, which is Corrections, Brutal Ratification of the Minutes. So there's two sets of minutes here, one from June 18th of 2025 and one from July 16th of 2025. Anybody have any questions or comments or changes? If not, a motion to approve, uh, do you need, can we do one motion or do you need separate motions for each one? Keith?
You can just do one motion.
Do we want motion for both minutes?
Okay.
I would move to approve the minutes as provided for June 18th, 2025 and July 16th, 2025.
Support.
All right, moved by Member Trisaius, seconded by Mr. Herschizer. Go ahead and do the roll call vote as well on that. Uh, Member Herschizer.
Yes.
I'm Richard Zeiss.
Yes.
Vice Chair Koenig votes yes, so the minutes are both approved for both those meetings. Brings us to communications. Do you have anything you want to mention about the communication? I know you said...
We just said the one that will...
That came through the email?
Yeah, that came through the email.
And we'll discuss that when we get to the topic. Okay. Moving right along, I don't think there's any unfinished business, so we will turn it to new business, which is ZBA case number 25-09, located at 5130 Country Drive. James and Jana Stewart are the applicants, are the property owners and/or the applicants. Uh, Oakhamus, Michigan, 48864. Mr. Chapman, take it away.
Thank you. So the applicant's requesting a variance from section 865651. Um, no accessory building shall project into any front yard. Um, the applicant's requesting this variance to construct an accessory building, um, that will project into the front yard at 5130 Country Drive. Uh, the site is approximately 20.03 acres and is zoned RR rural residential. Uh, the plot plan that was submitted shows the existing 3,398 square foot. Oops, sorry. A single-family home that was constructed in 1982 and the proposed 24 by 24, um, accessory building. Um, so our ordinance doesn't allow accessory buildings to project into any front yard. And the zoning ordinance actually defines front yard as a yard extending across the front of a lot line between the side lot lines and measured between the front line of the lot and the nearest point of the main building or land use. Uh, the garage is going to project 103.6 feet into the front of the principal structure, requiring 103.6-foot variance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chapman. Does the applicant or representatives from the applicant have anything to come up and say and speak on behalf? Feel free. If you can, just please state your name and address for the record and get up there. Microphone, yeah.
There you go.
Good evening and thanks for hearing our, our concerns. Uh, my wife, Jana, Jim Stewart, Country Drive. Uh, we've been there 14, going on 14 years. I really believe that the issue, uh, has to do with what, what has been called our front yard and what we call our side yard. Keith has a diagram, uh, up on the board. And this is a diagram, if I could step, or if I could show you this. This diagram, the heavy line which goes left and right and really runs east and west is our south property line. Country Drive, the cul-de-sac at the end of Country Drive ends at our south property line. Our driveway extends a short distance into our property line and then up about 130 yards and into the two-car existing garage. And there we have a couple of extra parking spaces. And you can see over here, this small square area is the site of the proposed two-car accessory building, which is about 30 feet from, uh, the southern edge of that is, about 30 feet from the south property line. We have always called this our side yard. The, our, our home faces directly due west. And on this, this is a Google Earth shot. You can see the end of Country Drive cul-de-sac. You can see the beginning of our driveway. And then if we can scroll, um, there you go. This is our home, which faces directly to the west. This period, which is to the south of our home, is what has been called the front yard. We feel, we have felt for 14 years that our front yard extends to the west. Um, and so our request, uh, what is to build this accessory garage, the red square, to use the existing driveway, be a short walk to our home. And so the variance is to have that area be okay for the construction of the, uh, two-car garage. Uh, here you see a photograph of the cul-de-sac. And this driveway that you see on the right side of this picture, uh, is our nearest neighbor's driveway. If we could go to the next picture. This shows the entrance to our driveway from the cul-de-sac. This is a survey which was recently done by Keps. This shows the driveway and our home. Okay, and that's the legal description. We have four, four pictures, or it might be eight pictures, on Country Drive. There are four other residents that have garages, accessory buildings, located on their property. And we just wanted to show those because it feels like there is a precedent to, uh, build an accessory structure. And at least in two of those cases, and I don't know about the exact measurements, but they appear to set closer to the road than the residence. Just wanted to add those to our discussion. And then, Mr. Chapman, if we could go to that...
Next one.
The first video?
Oh, I didn't get a video. Did you send one?
I sent four videos.
Oh.
Four one-minute videos.
I didn't see that email. Do you think you could resend it, the email?
Um...
Because I didn't get one.
I mean, it's on my phone.
It's on my phone.
Except one of the photos earlier was a video.
But it won't play. There's none on mine.
Oh, it won't play though?
It won't play on my...
No, this isn't.
Oh, it's a screenshot.
No, that's, those are screenshots, yeah.
Maybe it's, it's just a video of...
Let's go back to that first diagram then. I can, I can talk through the first diagram. So, uh, and, and scroll just a little bit. What my videos show, and if you can just summarize, bring that down just a little bit. Between our driveway and our nearest neighbor's driveway, you can see that our south property line. And there is a width of densely wooded area, which is a beautiful buffer, uh, which is 48 yards in width. From the cul-de-sac, from this neighbor's residence and from my neighbor over here on this side of the cul-de-sac, you cannot see the area in question, the proposed, you can't really see our home. Uh, the video was started in the cul-de-sac, walking up the driveway and showing a couple of shots through the densely wooded area, which you cannot see through, even now when the leaves are starting to fall, you still cannot see through either way, either direction. And you also see the 130-yard area in front of our home that we call our front yard. This area, we feel, is our side yard. And, and I, I don't, I've been trying to read and educate myself on what goes into naming a front yard versus a side yard. And it seems like it's somewhat arbitrary, especially because Country Drive stops before you get to our property. The cul-de-sac is the end of Country Drive. There is no road that...
Mr. Stewart, I don't mean to interrupt you. If you could possibly, could you come back to the...
I'm sorry, okay.
Thanks.
All right. So...
Well, it's not your own basis.
Oh, that's, that's the other part of it. The front of our home, our front door, our front porch, the front entrance, all faces directly due west. I wish we could have, I wish you could have seen my short videos, but, but...
We have your photos and all that in the packet, so we saw all the photos and that you were not showing. We have that all in front of us, so.
All right. Do you need to know why we want to build this structure? Does that enter into your decision?
It's none of our business.
Okay, well then, do you have other questions for me that I could answer for you?
That was going to be my question. So any, any board members have any questions for the applicant? Looks like Member Trisaius.
I don't really have a question. I snuck out there this afternoon and drove up your driveway and turned around to look at your house.
Well, you did, okay.
Because when I'm getting in one of these things, I like to see the property that we're talking about.
Well, I appreciate you taking the, actually, I asked a couple of different times if someone could do that exact thing and, and you were the first one to drive out and look at it, so.
You have a very narrow driveway.
I, I don't know what the width of it is.
Just about one car.
Okay, yeah.
No.
Was someone else coming in?
No, no, but I was, since you can't see out, the trees, you never know what you're going to run into. He is right. The house is described and shown on there is the short side with the garage is at the end of the driveway. And the house faces west, which normally would be considered the front facade. Um, our definition of, uh, front yard is based on the street location and the house. And you're right, it's a bit arbitrary, but it's the definition we have to deal with, so.
Okay.
Any question? I just, I have a couple of quick ones for him. I'm sure you can answer them.
Okay.
In the document, it says the house was built 1982, correct?
Yes.
When, how long, have you lived there since 1982 or...
We, this is our 14th year.
14 year, okay, that's where 14 came from.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had.
We actually knew the people that had lived there the whole time.
Did you? Okay. Yeah, I think that was one of the correspondence we got was from the neighbor to the west and the south, I guess, if you want. Across the street.
Susan McGillicuddy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you have that letter?
I did. I gave it to them.
Okay.
Yep, we saw it.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions?
We lived with Hannah, our other neighbors.
You want to come up to the microphone? You can, please. I know, but there might be members of the public that are trying to listen as well and watch, so.
Oh, gosh, I didn't know that.
You're fine. If you could state your name and address for the record, just so we get you on the record.
Jana Stewart, Country Drive.
Thank you.
And we would have had our other neighbor, but she's in Europe right now. Because, and, but she knows about the building also and is completely fine with it, so. But we didn't think to have her write a letter. Sue just offered.
Yeah. Any other questions before we go into board time? Okay, well, Mr. and Mrs. Stewart, we appreciate it. We're going to go into board time now so that we can discuss some... If we have any more questions, we'll call you back up to the podium, but you can go ahead and take a seat for now.
Thank you for your time.
All right. So with that, as we go into board time, before we go into the actual criteria, um, is there anything the board members want to discuss or bring up? Or you want to jump right into the criteria? It's up to you guys if you have anything. Member Herschizer.
Um, before jumping into criteria, I just wanted to say that letter that the neighbor Susan McGillicuddy wrote was a very compelling letter, easy to understand. When you get letters like that to ZBA, it's very, very nice.
That is true.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and go into the criteria. So there's five unique criteria. I know you guys had provided answers on that because the township requires that. And we go through each one of those and then have a deliberation. Unfortunately, because there's only three of us tonight, um, we all have to, in order for this to be approved, we have to unanimously vote yes on each of the all five criteria. So if one of us votes no on one of the criteria, then it's going to fail. So we just have to let you know that. So it's not, nothing against you, it's just the amount of, uh, members that we have up here at this time. But we'll go ahead and go through here. So number one criteria says, "Unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district, and these unique circumstances are not self-created." Any comments or questions about that one? Member Herschizer, go ahead and go first.
Yes, it is clearly a unique lot, unique situation. And it's, there isn't any other properties in the entire area that would, uh, be similar. So I don't have any problem with number one criteria. I agree 100%.
Member Trisaius?
As do I.
As do I. You know, I totally understand what you're saying, Member Trisaius, about the, the, the way that most zoning codes define their yards is based on the frontage and where it fronts the main road. So you have a peculiar situation with your house facing the different directions. That's definitely an interesting, peculiar circumstance, so, um, I think we can meet criteria number one. So we can move on to criteria number two.
And clearly it was not self-created because the house was built before they were there.
And that's why I wanted to clarify that, is when they moved in, so. Yep, so criteria number two, "Strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose." Hey, questions or comments there? Member Trisaius?
I would say that is met. This is what, 20 acres approximately? And certainly putting on a utility building would be a normal, um, activity of a property owner, would have the right to do that. So I think strict enforcement here would force it to go. I'm not sure where you could put it. Um, that would be accessible to a driveway reasonably close to the house.
Yeah, it's a good point. That was going to be my, my first visual. Strict interpretation would force them to put this structure essentially behind the front of the house, which means now they have to essentially pour more asphalt on that property and extend the driveway, which you got wetlands so close to this structure.
Right.
Anytime you add any pervious surface, you're always, or impervious surface, you're always going to have the chance for more runoff and essentially stuff going into that, that wetlands that are so close. So that, to me, would be, uh, a potential practical difficulty to the, to the homeowner that has to recreate a whole other driveway just for this one structure. Herschizer?
I agree with both of your findings on that one.
So with that, I believe we can meet criteria number two. So we'll move on to criteria number three. Granted, the variance is the minimum action necessary which would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety and provide substantial justice. Member Herschizer?
Um, I believe the applicant meets that barrier also. The property, uh, granting the variance will not affect any of the neighboring properties, that's for sure. And, um, I think if anything, it would be an improvement to the property value instead of a deep, you know, knocking down property values, which is one thing that this board really has to be concerned of in cases like this.
I agree. I would agree as well, yeah. I did have one question though, particularly, you want to come up to the microphone real quick? If you look at that map up there and you mentioned kind of the little, the little piece of the driveway that bumps out to the right, just north. North? I think it's north, just north to where the, what part of the structure is?
Actually, to the east.
Is it to the east? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, was there a thought of putting the garage or the accessory, accessory structure, connecting it to the pavement up there?
Well, that's a good question, and I think my wife will explain that one to me.
Come on, please, yeah.
Well, that was my doing. And mainly because we have already a basketball, like one of those cement big glass basketball hoops up. And for me, first of all, moving that was more expense, you know, adding more expense to it. And again, for me, as, aesthetically, that's why I, those other four neighbors that have the ones that are across from their garage made sense to me because I prefer when I pull up a driveway to not look at the front of the garage. I think looking at the side of it with landscaping around it would look to me more appealing than it being in those parking areas, um, those parking spots. And again, also because that's... And again, also because that's where our basketball hoop is and where we play, you know, games out there and things.
And, and in our preliminary discussion with the builder, we've taken some steps to make sure that the siding and the windows and so forth of the garage, if actually it would be situated, uh, so that the opening points directly towards our home. And you would, as you come up the driveway, you would see the side of the garage. And, and with the siding and windows, the way we've talked about it, it would be an exact match to the house. So, it would be pleasing to the eye. Instead of having, driving up and seeing the open garage if it was open.
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing is a, on that little piece, that you have an existing basketball hoop there, it would be kind of an additional difficulty to place the building there because of the hoop, and you use that for recreation, so therefore the location you picked is very close to that, is based, I don't want to say as close as possible, but it's very close to that without interpreting that. Okay, so I, in my eyes, um, because you're making an effort to put that kind of close around to that existing pavement, um, that's, that's a minimum action versus if you were to try to say, oh, we're going to put this thing all the way to the property line.
Right.
Right. Yeah, I didn't know exactly how to, how to answer that question. That's why, and our answer, we just put not applicable. But to your point, i- if the garage ends up being constructed in that proposed site, it would require just a very small cement entrance pad instead of a lot of additional cement or asphalt.
Okay, thank you.
The thing I noticed out there is that no doubt is used as a backup turnaround spot.
Yes.
So that you can get out of your garage rather than backing a hundred and thirty yards down the street, so.
That's correct, yes.
So.
Another good observation.
Yeah.
A power during a site visit.
That's right.
I appreciate you coming out to look things over. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I, I was a little nervous about intruding on your property. I figured, what the heck? All they can do is shoot me.
Don't tempt them, right?
No shots for fire.
None.
So, I think we, I think we've come to a, uh-
Yes.
-conclusion that we can meet, uh, criteria number three. So, moving on to criteria number four. Granted, the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character in the vicinity of the property. Um, I'm not going to speak on behalf of you two, but I think we've already answered that. We don't believe, as a board, that it would negatively or adversely affect your neighbor, especially with that big buffer you have there. You probably wouldn't even see it unless you're driving up on the driveway like Member Trisaius did, which you may have people do for deliveries and that, but they're not going to look and go, wow, that's out of place. So, any other comments on criteria number four?
I agree wholeheartedly.
So, I think you can meet criteria number four. So, last but not least, granted, the variance will be generally consistent with public interest and the purpose and intent of this chapter. Any questions or comments on that one? Or not questions?
I would only say that part of the purpose of the chapter is, and not just this section, but zoning in, in general, is to allow people to do what is appropriate on their property and utilize it as they desire to the extent that the laws allow. I think this complies with that and meets that requirement. They are building a building that is appropriate for the lot. They have to get, they are asking for a variance to place it in a desirable place, and it doesn't impact any neighbors. So, I think it, uh, generally consists it with the act.
Mr. Hersheiser, remember?
Clearly, uh, you couldn't say it's inconsistent with public interest. I don't see it affecting the public adversely at all. And I, I believe it, and my belief is that it meets the spirit of the ordinance.
And the person or person who would probably affect the most is in support of it because they gave us a letter, so. That's something good that you had on your side, seeing that. Anything else? Okay. So, I believe we can meet criteria number five. So, with that, um, no more questions. Do we have a motion on ZBA case number twenty-five dash zero-nine?
I move that this board approve ZBA case twenty-five point oh-nine for fifty-one thirty Country Drive, James and Jana Stewart in, uh, Oakhamus, Michigan. And, uh, granted the variance that's requested.
I support that motion.
All right, it's been moved by Member Trisaius and supported by Member Hersheiser. So, with only three of us here, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. So, Member Hersheiser, this is to approve the variance twenty-five dash zero-nine.
Yes.
Member Trisaius?
Yes.
And Vice Chair votes yes. So, you are approved. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right.
You did a very nice job presenting your, uh, request.
Thank you.
Made it easier to do.
Member Hersheiser?
I also want to say you did a very nice job on, uh, your write-up for your criteria. Um, some, we get that a lot of times, and it's hard to understand, and most of the time it's done by attorneys.
Hey.
Hey.
It's hard to understand the replies because sometimes it's hard to understand the questions, the criteria. Some of them are very gray, as this board has seen, trying to answer some of those is tough.
You did a great job. Well, we appreciate your, your time and, and your interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Since we've been granted the variance, um, what do we tell our builder?
I'll talk, oh, yeah, we'll, we'll take care of that.
You'll handle it?
Yeah, I'll handle it tomorrow.
Okay, okay, good.
That's what I was going to say, is work with Mr. Chapman.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it all taken care of.
Okay, all right. Again, and thank you for your help also. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Have a good evening, have a good night. All right, moving on, uh, other business? I don't believe we have any other business. So, that moves us on to public remarks. Anybody from the public want to come say anything? Uh-oh. Is there a member of the public want to come say something? You got to go to the microphone. No, up there, microphone up there. So, you got to say your name and address for the record.
He goes down low enough for him.
No.
What's your name?
What's your name?
Say my name's Riley.
My name's Riley.
Mom, you can say it for him if he can't say it.
Say, my name's Riley Koenig.
Yeah, you can say it.
Say it, my name's Riley Koenig.
We have to get you on the record as being a member of the public coming to talk, so say your name.
Say it. That's the microphone.
You're not this shy at home.
My name's Riley Koenig. Are you done?
What?
Okay. So, was that no public comment?
No public.
No public remarks, okay. Board member comments?
Well, Mr. Koenig, it was nice to see you tonight. Pleasant to have you here.
He's like, I'm going back to playing video games.
Yep.
Uh, board member comments? Nothing? Well, I'm disappointed that Lexi didn't show up. I'm going to have to tell her. We run these meetings smooth without her, so she'll be mad at me. Uh, with that, no other comments. We can be adjourned at seven oh-four.
Thank you.